Good evening, everybody, and welcome to tonight's Board of Selectmen meeting. We have just adjourned from executive session for the purpose of discussing strategies with respect to litigation involving 53 Eam Street in accordance with Massachusetts General Law Chapter 30A, Section 21A 3, as an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the town's litigation position, which the chairman so declares. I'd like you now to all stand and join us in the pledge of allegiance.
The pledge of allegiance is a flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, first up is the transmitting of the Treasury warrants, number 18, 18A, 19, and 19A. Let's start with 18. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion, Madam Chair, to accept.
Second.
Second.
All in favor? Approved, 18A. Do I have a motion?
Show move.
Second.
All in favor? Approved, 19.
Show move.
Second.
All in favor? Approved, and 19A.
Show move.
Second.
All in favor? Approved. We do not have any approval of minutes this evening, so we will move on to appointments. Our first appointment is Dan Ray, Vice President, Preconstruction and Design, Jewett Construction Company, on behalf of DIV 36-38 Upton LLC regarding public hearing for a permit to remove earth for property located at 36 to 38 Upton Ave. Reading of the hearing notice.
Yes, I'll just read into the record. Notice is hereby given that a public hearing will be held because the Board of Selectmen, before the Board of Selectmen in the Wilmington Town Hall, 121 Glen Road, Room 9, Wilmington, Mass., 7:00 PM on Monday, November 8, 2021, on the application of Dan Ray, Vice President of Preconstruction and Design, Jewel Construction Company, on behalf of DIV 36-38 Upton LLC to remove earth products on the land situated at 36-38 Upton Drive, Wilmington, Mass., and further described as parcel 18 and 18L on the assessor's map R1 and shown as plans on the application for the, for said permit.
And I'd like to confirm that the notice was published, posted, and served upon interested parties as required?
Yes, it was.
Okay. And is the application complete?
Yes, it is. We just need the cards confirming certification of receipt of the green cards.
Okay. Okay, so the first thing, just a few basic ground rules before we get going. We are going to limit comments to the subject of the application. I'd like to start with the opportunity for comments and a presentation from the applicant, which will then be followed by comments and recommendations from staff. We'll then go to my fellow board members for an opportunity to ask questions or comments, and then we will go to the members of the audience to give them an opportunity to ask questions or offer comments. And I just ask that all comments and questions be directed through the chair and myself. So I'd like to now ask the applicant or representative who is present and to please identify yourself by stating your name, address, and affiliation for the project for the record.
Yeah, I'm here with Dan Ray, with Jewett Construction, Vice President of Preconstruction and Design. Our main office is in Fremont, New Hampshire, and we're here to talk a little bit about the project.
Great. And do you have the receipts and green cards?
I do.
Okay.
Can you just present those over to the board?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Okay, so if you'd like to take the stage, that'd be great.
I'm also here with Greg Stewart, our Senior Vice President at Jewett Construction, and Matt Costa with Beals Associates.
You're welcome to join him at the table.
So we have a couple boards here to run you guys through kind of the high points of the project's cut-and-fill analysis as it's been defined to date. As you noted a moment ago, this site is at 36 and 38 Upton Drive here in Wilmington, Massachusetts. I have Matt Costa with Beals Associates, who's the civil engineer of record here at the end of the table. My associate Greg Stewart is the Senior Vice President at Jewett Construction. Greg's role involves a lot of the operational minutia of these jobs, and he'll be very heavily involved from groundbreaking through closeout. So we're here to talk about the process, the procedure, quantities, any questions you guys have about just logistics and sequencing of the site, as it's presented today as well. It's map R1, parcel 18 and 18L. Right now, the proposal is approved under site plan permit and stormwater management permit that was issued back on August 8, 2019, review number 1904. Our Conservation Commission approval was issued back on August 9, and the Mass. DEP file number for this specific, cut-fill was 3441429. General quantities before I get into some specifics. In general, we have, it's actually an import site, so we have cuts, fills. A lot of the cuts are being reused onsite as additional granular borrow or structural fill. We do have an export, however, of topsoil and organics that equate to about 24,000 cubic yards in total. Basically, topsoil that's not reusable as structural fill or common fill throughout the site. So even though we're importing a lot of material, we still do have an export of that quantity to talk about today. So what I have here, I'll start with the board starters. So this figure is just our overall site plan for the project. You'll see the four primary structures, three structures up on the elevated portion of land and the one lower structure to the east or easterly side of the site, kind of southeasterly side. The image below this is a more technical depiction of the cuts and fills as they relate to the workability of the site. Right now, it's a sparsely wooded site that's being cleared, grubbed. The plan is to start right around the middle of December and work through the winter on the clearing, grubbing, and the rough cuts. It will involve some ledge removal by means of blasting and mechanical removal. This depiction in front of you tonight shows in blue the areas of fill and in red the areas of cut. So you can see some higher topography that we're knocking down. A good portion of that is just by mechanical means that we get to the actual foundation and drainage features that need deeper removal, where we'll be actually blasting some rock out, redistributing to some of the fill areas, and working the site from basically red to blue, as you see here on this depiction. This is kind of independent of the topsoil export of that 20-some-odd-thousand yards that comes prior to a lot of this movement. As far as sequencing of that operation, we have two permanent entrances that are planned for the site. Those both will be utilized as temporary construction entrances that will be monitored for and cleaned up on a daily basis for just dust and debris and general housekeeping. We will be starting the work with fills on the northwesterly side, where we're going to begin constructing retaining walls in the spring, after a lot of the clearing, grubbing, and rough cuts and blasting are done this winter. Off to the kind of southeasterly side, where there's a, there are some encroachments that we're staying clear of. We'll also be constructing retaining walls before we get into the actual formwork and the utility work out of the core of the site, at which point we'll be mostly working from right to left to construct these facilities, from foundations up through concrete tilt-wall construction. So that's kind of the gist of the general sequencing of the site. The two controlled construction entrances will be used for, on the northerly side, the imports and exports on the southerly side. So that is kind of the gist of the project, the schedule, some of the quantities that we're anticipating countering onsite. We primarily will be using the 93 corridor for any trucking in and out of the site, which is a pretty quick shot from the site, so that's our intent. We're here to answer any questions that you folks have or address any potential concerns you may have.
Mr. Chairman, any recommendations?
Yes, recommendations. We have, from the DPW, a series of recommendations. There's actually 17 conditions that they note. I would also inform the board that these conditions have been discussed with the applicant, and it's my understanding the applicant is accepting of these conditions. The permit is not assignable. At the expiration of the permit, the grade shall conform substantially to the proposed grades as shown in the plan submitted with the application and approved by the planning board. Should any modifications to the proposed development program result in grade changes or changes in the quantity of earth removal, the applicant shall apply to amend the permit accordingly. Condition three, at the expiration of the permit, the entire area shall be covered with loam and seeded with recognized grass seed of good quality, except where the area consists of proposed landscape, proposed pavement services, or other specific landscape treatment. Point four, the applicant, its agent, and employees shall use due caution when entering and leaving the site, and shall use extreme caution when passing school buses. Point five, the hauling route for construction vehicles and equipment is anticipated to be Upton Drive to Andover Street South to Route 125. The applicant shall avoid the use of minor roadways in residential areas. Point six, the hours of hauling on ways used by the public shall be limited to Monday through Friday inclusive and not earlier than 7:00 AM, not later than 3:30 PM. Point seven, the applicant shall agree to keep loam within the town of Wilmington whenever possible. Point eight, if rock crushing operations are to be used onsite, they will be limited to the hours of operation between 9:00 AM and 3:00 PM in a normal weekdays only. Rock crushing operations are not allowed on weekends or holidays. Point nine, any blasting operations shall be in accordance with the town, state, and federal laws, regulations, and policies, as may be applicable. Point 10, the applicant or their designated contractor shall install a crushing and stone construction entrance per approval of site plan review plan set. Point 11, the applicant or their designated contractor is responsible for daily cleanup of all soil material, stone, et cetera, tracked along the hauling route. Periodic inspection will be made by the Engineering Division to ensure the contractor is in compliance with this condition of the permit. Point 12, an existing 8-inch sewer main traverses the property and project site. The sewer main originates at a sewer main hole along Upton Drive and collects sanitary sewage from 35 Upton Drive and 37 Upton Drive before ultimately discharging to the sewer main in Ballard Vale Street. The proposed plan includes provisions to relocate the sewer main onsite to accommodate the new building development program. The contractor is hereby notified that the existing sewer main must be protected with adequate cover, remain in service, and all sewer main holes must be readily accessible until the relocation is complete, inspected, leak-tested, and deemed suitable for activation by the Department of Public Works. Prior to commencement of the work, the applicant must schedule a preconstruction meeting with the Engineering Division, and shall provide construction sequence, schedule, and protocol to protect the existing sewer main throughout the construction for review by the Engineering Division. Point 13, all municipal infrastructure casting adjustments must be inspected by the Department of Public Works. The contractor will be responsible for cleaning any construction sediment debris entering the system at the discretion of the Department of Public Works. The contractor shall take extra precautions and make all necessary provisions to prevent construction debris and sediment from entering the municipal sewer system. Point 14, the applicant or their designated contractor is responsible to limit all dust and excessive noise associated with the earth removal process. Periodic inspections will be made by the Engineering Division to ensure the contractor is in compliance with the condition of the permit. Point 15, the applicant will notify the town or his/her intention to obtain a renewal of this permit at least 30 days before the expiration date of the permit. Point 16, the applicant is required to furnish a performance bond made payable to the town of Wilmington for the faithful performance of the work under the permit. The Engineering Division is recommending a performance bond in the amount of $246,838... I'm sorry, $830. The surety company must be located and licensed to transact business in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. The applicant shall contact the Engineering Division of the Department of Public Works to coordinate said performance bond. Point 17, in the event any of the above conditions are not faithfully observed and performed, then the selectmen shall have the option to revoke the permit at any time. That's from the Engineering Public Works. The Health Department recommends approval of the earth removal permit for 36-38 Upton Drive. The Building Inspector is indicating the Building Department has no issues with the earth removal permit for the above stated address. And then the Planning Office, the project located at 36-38 Upton Drive, received Planning Board and Conservation approval in 2019 for construction of four new industrial buildings, and those approvals are currently valid. As such, granting the special permit for earth removal is recommended. The board should be aware that the new property owner has recently submitted application to the Planning Board and Conservation Commission to make modifications to the proposed project. Modifications include reducing the number of buildings from four to three, but increasing the total square footage from 256,640 to 263,906 square feet. The public hearing for the modifications will be opened on November 2 with the Planning Board and November 3 with the Conservation Commission. Should the quantity of earth be, should the quantity of earth to be removed change with the revised project, I recommend the applicant return to the board to amend the earth removal permit.
Thank you. I will open up questions to the board here. Any questions or comments?
Yeah.
Slipknot, Kyra?
Just based on the last piece of correspondence that the town manager read, you're proposing four buildings, but this is saying that it's going to be three. So is it four or three buildings?
So the three primary structures you see on this image here with the highlights are being combined into two longer rectangular structures with a marginal actual decrease in footprint, but a gross increase, including a couple mezzanines that we're going to be constructing within them. So the footprints of these three structures are being combined and changed a bit in our amended site plan approval.
So you have two buildings then on the top and then one below, is that what you're saying?
There'll be one rectangular structure that basically takes place of these two square structures.
Okay.
So very similar in context, but the intent is to, once we secure those approvals, the revised approvals, any changes in quantities of export just come back and amend this permit that we're applying for tonight.
Should there be a quantity of earth removal? So the last sentence about should there be earth removal change, then that they recommend, the Conservation Commission, the planning recommend that you come back to the board. So should you have done that first and then come back to us? I mean, why would we approve something tonight when there's going to be a change to this? And they, I see Ms. Gingrich out there, who's, maybe she can help us.
Our intent is to be proactive and get ahead of this approval, present the content tonight. Our mobilization date is scheduled for the middle of December, which is on or around when we'll be back in front of the board to begin amending our site plan approval and our conservation hearing. What we don't want to do is get into a situation where we're at a sequence with the Board of Selectmen hearing, and we're into, say, the month of January or February, and we're held up with starting some of the work onsite under this plan as you see it today. In all likelihood, the exports from scheme to scheme will be very, very similar. So we're looking to check the box with you folks. If there is a sizable decrease or increase in that export of topsoil, then we would just come back for a quick amendment. We would hope or anticipate, and then just continue on. So we're trying to present it proactively in front of you guys tonight to make the content of the project known, and then just make a minor adjustment in the future if needed. The export quantity in all actuality for the topsoil and organics could remain exactly the same, but we don't have our arms completely around that yet.
Okay, so there could be changes to it. Again, I mean, I'm not, I'm not trying to be difficult with it. I think it's great that there's new development coming in and all, but this seems to indicate to me, which is just, you know, you initially presented four buildings, then when this came out, you're now saying it's three buildings, and there could be adjustments to the earth removal. So again, wouldn't it have made sense just to do it all at once rather than to wait? If you, this is, unless it's already been done, because it says November 2 and November 3, and right now it's November 8, has this already been completed?
We've presented to the board and were anticipating being back on the docket that first week of December, or maybe the second week of December.
Yeah.
To address any final items that need addressing and hopefully secure approval. So we're just here in good faith. We're not, yeah, we're not at all trying to, we're trying to be forthcoming with the fact that the footprints of these three buildings are being combined and changed in minor ways, and just trying to get out ahead of this as early as possible to pull a permit, and then if need be, then we would be back to amend it. And you guys would already know who we were and what the context of the project was, and you'd be familiar with the quantities that we're proposing. And in large part, they're going to be very consistent with what you're seeing today. We're just, the grade, the finished floor of these three structures is the same as the two structures that are being proposed in their place, so it's not like we're picking the grade up or dropping it substantially from what you're seeing today. It's just, it's a square footage adjustment in the context of the site. So we're trying to get to you guys a month sooner and get out ahead of things and be proactive here.
Why don't I see if maybe, Valerie, do you want to add any context to that since you're here?
Sure. So for the board, so they currently have approvals in place for plenty of board approvals, Conservation Commission approvals for this project that you see in front of you, and those were granted in 2019. So essentially, they could construct this project, and that's what they're in front of you with tonight for the earth removal. They are, they have applied to the Planning Board and Conservation Commission to modify their approval, to change some of the wooden, building footprints, some of the parking areas. So that's being reviewed in front of those, the board and the commission currently. They're going to be on the agenda for December, addressing comments that were made and staff comments. That public hearing will extend until all comments are addressed. If they receive approvals for that modified design, they would then calculate earth removal quantities and potentially come back to this board for an amendment. The site layout itself is very similar as far as the, you know, the footprint of development goes. So they are rearranging some things, but overall, it's very similar looking.
Ms. Chair? So we're approving this concept tonight, and then once they go through your board, they'll come back to approve a different concept, correct?
Correct, if necessary. If the quantities change or if you guys just would have liked to see us back here irregardless, see how we'd be, that would be the intent.
And what type of businesses are going in there?
This is going to be industrial, distribution, warehousing, that type of application. The tenants are still being determined at this time. This is, it's being developed by the Davis Companies. They're a development firm out of Boston, and they're still marketing the two facilities or three facilities that they'll end up ultimately building here.
Thank you.
Mr. DePahama, did you have a question?
No, it was answered by Valerie, matter of fact. Thank you.
Good.
So the plans that we have here just essentially have not been revised to reflect that. What we're seeing visually right there is the only representation of the three buildings.
Yeah, the plans that you have in front of you are consistent with what's up here on the board, as well as our cut-fill analysis. Everything that we're presenting to you guys for the earthwork permit is consistent with the previous site plan approval and Conservation Commission approval that we have secured. So we're proceeding under that content, that context to just push things forward.
Okay. So the estimations, what you have for earth removal, you feel it most likely will be adequate for what your end result is going to be?
Right.
Through the chair to the town manager, what has been the practice in the past when they've gotten to a certain point and they're in the midst of changes? Has any prior Board of Selectmen issued an earth removal permit in this type of sequencing with futuristic changes already being forecasted? Do you have any concerns about us doing this now? I would assume it wouldn't be on the agenda if you did.
I don't have any concerns because, as was noted, if there's an expectation that the amount, the quantity is going to deviate from what's proposed, then they would have to come back. I don't recall any instances, and perhaps Mr. Looney can comment, or perhaps Valerie Gingrich can comment on this, but whether a similar circumstance has arisen in a past case?
I'm not aware of any similar circumstance, but I share that I'm not concerned with the sense, in the sense that they did receive site plan approval before. So they have current, like, an active site plan approval, an active Conservation Commission approval for order conditions, and the modification is a consolidation of buildings within that overall footprint. And as the applicant mentioned, the finished floor elevations are relatively similar. So, and I think in the conditions that, the draft conditions that I have written up for the board, I put that as like number one or number two, that they have to come back to the board if there's a change. So it gives the board another opportunity that if there is some change, some drastic change, there's another bite at the apple, that they come back and present that to the board before pursuing it.
Thank you. So I mean, obviously, don't want to hold up, but want to do our due diligence as well. And then just to put it right out there, because we're not part of some of the other meetings, there's an extensive bullet point of conditions. You collectively as a team, could you respond in the affirmative that you have no issues with the recommendations that have been set forth and that there won't be a problem for you to adhere to those as well?
Yeah, absolutely. We've reviewed these at length with, internally and with our client, and everybody's willing to adhere to them with no comment.
Okay. Mrs. DePahama?
So basically what you're looking for from us tonight is to get our vote in the affirmative so that you can get groundbreaking and get going on it before the, I'm assuming before the real cold weather comes in?
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you. I have no vote for this, thank you.
No comments.
Gentlemen, I would just thank you for coming into the presentation and I appreciate you being forthcoming with your intentions.
Absolutely.
Thank you. I will offer it up to the audience members if they have any comments or questions. None, okay. All right, all right, so I am going to entertain a motion to close the hearing. Do you have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Mr. De Palma, do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor? All those opposed? Okay, so voted, public hearing is closed. I will now entertain a motion to approve the application for earth removal as presented.
Make a motion that we approve the application as presented here this evening.
Second.
All right, Mr. De Palma? And all those in favor? All against and so moved? Congratulations, thank you very much. And we will need to sign off right at the end of the meeting.
Yes, I have two documents that the board can sign at the conclusion of the meeting.
All right, well, thank you so much for coming in, we appreciate it. And we look forward to hearing more about it.
Thank you very much, thank you.
Thank you, take care. Okay. Thank you, have a good night. Okay, continue with appointments. Chief Police, Police Chief Desmond and Traffic Officer Purbush of the Wilmington Police Department regarding the 2021 Santa Parade. Good evening, gentlemen.
Good evening, my wife.
Well, thank you for being here.
Thank you. Hard to believe we're talking about Christmas, but here we are.
I know, what's good stuff.
So last year's parade, despite being in the middle of COVID, obviously we had some restrictions of what we could do with it, less stops and things like that. But even despite that, the amount of food and toys that we collected was something we had never seen before. It was really something and a, a great credit to this community. Literally a truckload of toys, a trailer load of toys actually, and food was collected during the parade last year. So obviously we're not quite out of this yet, so we're going to have the same protocols this year. And obviously we come before you tonight to, you know, get your blessing with this. And probably despite, you know, the fact that Dan and I are here, this is, there are a lot of town employees that help out with this. This isn't just a police function, the fire department, TPW Water Department, a lot of volunteers that, you know, volunteer the entire day and night to do this. So it's not just our event, but it's been kind of the brainchild of Dan. He spearheaded this and we hope we can get your support to do it again this year. And if there's any specific questions you have about this year's parade, you can certainly ask.
Okay, I'll open it up to the board, any question?
I just want to thank you, you know, all the men and women that are sponsoring this. It's a great time by everyone and it's nice to see that the town is participating in these things again. And again, congratulations to your department for what you've done for this parade.
Thank you.
Mr. Benoff?
Dan, thank you very much for being here. Appreciate you, you know, bringing this forward on behalf of your department and many others. I think one of the great additions in recent years is the live broadcast. I would hope that would, is that going to continue this year?
Absolutely, yep.
Awesome, I think people really appreciate that because it's kind of a good way to keep track of where they are and you can kind of anticipate when they might be coming down your road or nearby you. So I think people really look forward to that. But I wish you great success. I hope it's a great weather for you and I'm sure it'll be a great turnout.
Thank you. I, I do have to say it is kind of tough. You know, we, we try to go out there even with the snow, the cold, traffic conditions. So we always try to keep up with the timeframes that we always set. But it is hard because especially when we were still doing the schools where, you know, Santa was visiting with the kids, we're not going to turn kids down. So if a parent happens to show up late, we're not going to turn them down. Sometimes things got delayed, so that was definitely one of the things that we tried to do, was that live update just to try to keep people informed on what was going on.
Much appreciated, thank you, thank you madam chair.
Any other comments, questions?
Yeah, I, again, I echo my colleagues' comments and appreciate everything that you do, especially for the residents in Wilmington, it's great. I got to tell you, I enjoyed, you came down Woburn Street and I ran out there with my dog and we watched you go by, it was, it was pretty good, I have to say. And thank you for what you do.
Just want to share the same gratitude, I know it's all been said, but I think, you know, you guys do so much for the community and provide, you know, first responder type services to, to residents. But these are the things where we can really see you connect with, you know, everyone in town. And I think, you know, with world and national headlines aside from the pandemic, just it's a credit to you guys as men and women for what you do for communities. And I think it's become a thankless job and you've, you've had to go through a lot, you know, in the police world in terms of how things are viewed. And to see this come before us for a vote, we, we're all just so enthused about approving it. And, you know, thank you for still wanting to do that, you know, and to put your faces out there and to recognize that it is not just the two of you, but, you know, a wealth of other people in, in various roles. It really shines a bright light on Wilmington and makes us believe again in the spirit of Christmas and just the team spirit in town. And I think we need more activities like this. So thank you for doing this. And, you know, obviously some people go to work and just punch a time ticket and collect their paycheck, but it's things like this and going outside of your regular functions as a police officer to, to do this for the community, this is what differentiates work performance among your peers. So thank you for doing that, it's a very value-added service to the town, so thank you.
Thank you.
We, we do appreciate, and I do got to say, you know, I have a huge group of volunteers, as the chief mentioned, from all over the departments. And I, I can't do it without the help of them, you know, without the support of you guys, you know, Jeff from the town hall. It's a team thing and I really have to thank also the, the people who live in this town because without them, we're not able to do what we're able to do as far as this parade. It's something that we love to do, we've been doing it, I think since, we said 2015, it's been a while. I think the last time, the last time you were on the board was when we, I came before you guys and approved, and asked for approval for the first time. So it's been a while, but it's been a, it's been a tradition. And for us, it's, it's not, it's not about the event, but it's how the people, you know, seeing the little kids and all, or even like adults coming out in their pajamas still at like 11 o'clock in the morning running out.
I was not in my pajamas.
It's, it's, it's definitely something that, you know, we're, we're glad to do.
To win for us and the community, it really is.
Mr. Carr, you want to?
Yeah, just a quick question. I see that it's, you haven't mentioned, it's Sunday, December 5th?
December 5th, yeah, sorry about that.
And what's the timeframe again? Could you remind us?
So we're going to, we're going to plan on December 5th this year. We're going to start, we're going to plan for 8:00 AM. The reason why we did that, obviously it's getting colder, it's getting darker, a lot earlier. And we also want to make sure that the volunteers that are out there are safe. So we start at 8:00 AM. I mean, we had plans to actually expand us and hopefully next year we'll be able to come forward and be able to put those plans in. But with, most of the kids that we target for this event are now just getting vaccines and there's still mask mandates and stuff like that. We just felt it was safe to continue just the parade portion and not do the stops. But we're going to start at 8:00, we're going to go hopefully to about 5:00. As Greg had mentioned, you know, definitely keep an eye on like our Facebook page. We have a Facebook page just for the parade. We'll try to keep the, the live updates going. We still definitely plan on collecting toys, food and letters to the troops. Last year we were able to give letters to the troops to Lou, who was able to send them overseas. We gathered so much food from the food pantry last year that we told them that they needed a truck and they brought two little SUVs and then they were shocked that we weren't, we weren't lying. We were like, no, we really told you we needed a truck. And it was really good because a lot of that food went to Wilmington. And whatever extra food that we, that they had, they're part of like this big collective. So if Tewksbury needed some extra food, stuff like that, so none of that food went to waste. And all the toys went right to Wilmington, the Wilmington Fire Program for their toy, annual toy collection for Christmas. So we plan on doing that again this year and, you know, we just want to see everyone come out and have fun.
Thank you, and I echo my colleagues' sentiments as well. I know, I always enjoy, I think it's, you know, in, in my neighborhood, we would text one another, you know, as, as it's getting close and, you know, someone's watching Facebook and all that stuff. But it's the best sound to hear those sirens and know they're good sirens as opposed to what's going on. So, you know, thank you both and your colleagues and, and everybody. And in the interest of not keeping you here till we get to the board to consider, I'd like to just jump our sequence here and jump right to the board to consider this request to conduct Santa Parade on Sunday, December 5th, 2021?
I'll make a motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? So moved, congratulations, we're all looking forward to it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, have a good night.
You've got to put some old weight on though.
I know, I'll try.
You're growing the bid.
We'll see you December 5th.
All right, have a good night.
You too.
All right, now we have Paula Looney, Town Engineer, and Chivren Everett KP Law Regarding Unacceptable Ways. Thank you, Mr. Looney.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. Paula Looney, Town Engineer here with Chivren Everett from KP Law. We're also joined with Jamie McGoldy, Operations Manager.
Welcome, Jamie.
And Valerie Gingrich, Director of Planning and Conservation, to join in this discussion on Accepted Ways. There's no action to be taken tonight, this is, this is just a discussion. My plan is to give a quick presentation. There are three new board members since the last time I gave this presentation, so we thought it'd be helpful to provide this information as a background before we have opened it up to a discussion on the topic. I've got kind of a lot to cover, so I'm just going to dive right in.
Go for it.
Okay, first up, I'm just going to start you all off with a definition of what an unacceptable way is. By definition, a roadway or street open for public use and passage but not owned or otherwise controlled by the town. And this definition comes from the Committee on Unaccepted Ways Report to Town Meeting. And I highlight that because this committee was formed in 1994 per town meeting vote to address this issue. They issued this report three years later. It had the best of intentions, but unfortunately I just didn't, didn't exactly work out. And I'll get into the reasons why in, in later slides. I still do think it's worth a read. I based my research on this document. And at the very least, it helped me separate kind of fact from fiction and pointed me in the right direction on where to go with research here. The town, just some stats, we have over 200 unacceptable ways comprised of over 30 miles. And I bring that up because it's not just like one homeowner or two or three homeowners on like one street. And I think that makes sense in looking at it maybe more holistically as to how addressing this issue could be considered to the general benefit as like the community as a whole and not just self-serving. This next slide is just a quick table on what the differences are between unacceptable ways and accepted ways. I get a, every once in a while I get a phone call from a resident that's, that says, you know, I, this is crazy. I've lived on my street for 30 years and I, I had no idea I lived on an unacceptable way. And I think this slide helps understand maybe why that's the case. These are all the town services that we provide, both on public ways and unacceptable ways. Trash pickup, fire protection, police protection, snow plowing, school bus pickup, school bus stops, pothole repair for safe passage. Really the only difference, one of, the major difference is when it comes to major, major repair or reconstruction. And that's just a legal issue. In Mass General Law states, the town can't expend public funds on private property. The current condition of unacceptable ways, they range from anything from poor, deplorable to, to actually really good. So the improvement, I mean, sorry, the condition ranges from that. The improvements range from, you know, do nothing to major reconstruction and addressing things like grading the surface and drainage. These are three examples of roadways. The first one is a do-nothing roadway, it's Minkburn Road. And actually we went to town meeting two years ago and, and had this roadway accepted. Example two is Carmel Street, which is more in the poor to deplorable condition that the prescription for that roadway would be a drainage and full death reconstruction. And then you have a roadway, Rollins Road here, which is just completely unimproved and that's a gravel or dirt roadway. So a frequently, another frequently asked question I get is, well, why can't we just start paving those roadways? And I alluded to this earlier, is the town doesn't have ownership or easement rights within the way to make these improvements. And per Mass General Law, we, the town can't legally expend public funds for the construction, repair, reconstruction of the non-public, unacceptable ways. Interestingly enough, the town, the public ways are actually funded through a state program called the Chapter 90 Program. Mr. McGoldy is here to speak to that after the presentation if the board has questions on that program. But in essence, it's a reimbursement program. And the, the very first certification that Mr. McGoldy has to make is that the way is a public way to qualify for reimbursement. So aside from that, not all roadways really should be just paved as is. It's just not that simple, I wish it was. But some of these roadways, paving's expensive. And if you put a top coat of pavement on a roadway that doesn't have the right structural support under it or it has improper drainage or isn't graded right and has a low point, that investment's just going to disappear in a year and, you know, just be a kind of a waste of money. And then lastly, believe it or not, not all residents wish to have their roadway paved. Valerie and I have had discussions with a couple of different residents who said, you know what? I, I just, it's not for us. We like the rural feel of our roadway and some folks think it's a traffic calming measure as well. Another frequently asked question that kind of ties in, it's to the first question, it's this like circular argument. It's like, well, can the town pave our road? And I say, well, it's, it's not accepted, so no, well, why can't you accept it? Right, and unfortunately the, so our, our current practice is that the roadway be brought up to a condition to be, except to, to entice town meeting to vote, to accept the way, and that's part of the street acceptance process. So we can't just kind of wave a wand and, and accept a, I think, a, a big mass of these. There's just no quick fix option in that respect. The street acceptance process is a statutory process. It follows Massachusetts General Law. And the reason is, is that it's, it's a conveyance, it includes a conveyance of land rights, which includes a title research and verification, roadway layout. And I, I added this little sketchup here that shows how the, how the land rights are divvied up between landowners. So each adjoining landowner owns to the center line of the way in most cases along their, along their frontage. And that's a, again, another Mass General Law called the Derelict Statute. This is an overview of the street acceptance process from kind of soup to nuts, just hitting on the major points of it. The first, it starts with the preparation of a survey plan, engineering plan, and legal documents. The survey plan just, it establishes the boundary and all, all adjoining property owners that have the right in that way. But it also correlates the surface features. So your, the, the pavement, the fences, stone walls, retaining walls, we've even seen sheds and gardens, and correlates that to the boundary. And why that's important is because we're conveying land rights here, right? So you want to know exactly on each end what you're getting and what you're giving up if you're the, if you're the resident. The, the process is initiated, initiated at the Board of Selectmen. They refer the matter to the the matter to the, um, Planning Board. The Planning Board then reviews and provides a recommendation, and what they're looking at is the surface grading and drainage of the roadway. Is it adequate to move forward with, um, through the street acceptance process? Uh, the, then the Board holds a public hearing. They vote, um, to lay out the way as a town way, and then it goes to town meeting vote. And town meeting, um, if they accept the way, the town then has 120 days to acquire, um, the rights either by deed or by easement deed, um, in the, in the way. If any, if that step isn't taken, it's kind of all for naught. So, each one of these steps, uh, has to be followed to go through with the street acceptance.
Paul, can I interrupt with a quick question?
Sure.
So, on that, let's say it gets accepted. Now, do the residents of that street at that point have a say?
So, they would...
Or does that come earlier?
They would actually be, um, in our current practice, th- they'd come with the, come forward with the petition.
Oh, okay.
Um, so they would initiate it. If the Board were to initiate it, um, we would definitely want, um, an open dialogue and make sure that we had unanimous support
Okay.
from the residents so that there are no gaps, and certainly, um, the, the clock would be ticking if like it went to town meeting vote, right?
Yeah.
And we only have 120 days. Um, we'd want to make sure that those conveyances, uh, happen in an efficient manner. I remember with Pompret, um, it, it almost didn't, didn't happen because of it. So, we went to town meeting, um, it, it was accepted. We had 120 days. Actually, Sherin worked on the, um, the instruments there for recording, but there was just one resident who, it, you know, it just wasn't a, it wasn't a hot topic in, in their life, for whatever reason, you know?
Yeah.
And, uh, we all have priorities and things of that nature. So, thankfully though, at the last minute, we, we came through.
Awesome. Thank you.
Sure. This is an outline of, of the costs of street acceptance. Um, so there are the upfront costs, and I, I call them upfront because it's the cost to just have the way to go through that street acceptance process, the survey plan preparation, the engineering plan preparation, and then, uh, the, of course, the attorney piece. Then second, then there's the physical improvements in the construction, and that's if there are improvements that have to be made to get the roadway to an acceptable level. It could be, um, a widening. It could be a lack of a turnaround. It could be sidewalks. It could be, um, drainage or reconstruction. Um, it's a, it's a case-by-case basis. So, what I did is, I put this table together. We did a complete inventory of all unacceptable ways in town where we assessed their condition and, and came up with this, with a budget for, um, it's a preliminary estimate on how to address and get these roadways up to an acceptable level. So, I based this table on whether or not the roadway first was over or under 20 feet wide, and that is, just comes from the adequate width for, for a fire, uh, for a fire lane where you have a fire truck pulled over and, uh, emergency, uh, vehicle can pass it safely. And I broke it into good, fair, poor, and unimproved. Um, I can direct you just to the magic, the total number here. The total cost we'd be looking at if we took all this on as a whole is four, just over 14 million. And, uh, this is based on 2019 values. Uh, the numbers we're seeing over the last year, they're, they're all over the place, so I don't think it'd be a, a fair assessment right now to look at, um, construction numbers and values. Um, so, we're relying on, on this number. But you can see it's a, um, it's a large sum.
Paul? Excuse me?
Oh, oh, I'm sorry. It was a...
I see these costs here. Who's liable for these? Are these the town or are these the residents on each roadway?
So, this, um, this is overall, we, an overall look of what it would cost, right? So, at this point, there's no, there is no, like, our current policy, um, is to advise residents to the Betterment's Program to finance their own particular, um, their roadway and go through the Betterment's Process to have it improved. So, it would be on the, on the residents. I mean, I can, I, I have a slide that will explain that. I think, actually, it's this one.
The reason we have so many unimproved roads is because over the years, developers have come in, built homes, never got the roads approved?
Uh, good question. I, I think it's a little more in, in depth in that, that the Wilmington, um, in like the early 1900s was, um, a lot of land was protracted subdivision, so it was like drawn out and not built out. And these small parcels started to be, uh, sold off to, um, you know, it was like almost a vacation, like seasonal homes and what have you, cottages, and, and I think when Wilmington hit like a, the first like real residential boom in like the 40s and 50s, it was before we had any subdivision, any subdivision control laws were passed, any roadway regulation, uh, requirements were passed. So, these building permits were being issued for these parcels that were, um, legal to do at the time, but there was no oversight on, on the roadways, right? Not until the 70s. In the 70s, the town addressed it, and I remember, actually, I was, when I was researching this, um, it was like, uh, 1972 or something, uh, town meeting, um, it was a, I think it was a Board of Selectmen's Meeting, where the town engineer at the time said, he spoke and he said, you know, I've, I've seen 200, I saw 200 building permits get issued, and I haven't reviewed a single one of them or a sing, like, any of, no roadway construction standards or, or anything, and, you know, this is an issue we need to address. And from that point, the town adopted the official map, which was a step in, I think, in the right direction. And then subdivision control laws came, came along for the town, and we, um, now we have standards that all developers must follow when they develop a roadway. So, um, getting back now to the, uh, presentation that, our, what our current practice is, I, I showed you the slide before with the overall cost. Uh, in this slide, I'm gonna show you a, just an actual example of a street that, um, started to go through the process. So, what our current practice is, and this was per, um, the Committee's Report, the Committee on Unaccepted Ways' Report. That's what we follow, is that roadways are not accepted until they're improved to town standards, which address at the very least grading, servicing, and drainage. And that, that also comes from, um, the Mass. General Law. And the reason for that is really just to entice town meeting vote. Is, i- if, if you think about it, you could go through the whole pro, like, the whole street acceptance process and incur costs just to have it fall apart at town meeting vote, and that's, so it puts it into a high-risk category, right? That's why they, I think that was the reasoning behind it. Uh, per the Committee on Unaccepted Ways, the residents are referred to the Betterment's Program to finance these improvements. It's just a, it's a special tax that's assessed, um, to each resident. This example, Carmel Street, they came to us, um, 2016, I believe, um, or four or five years ago with a petition. Um, we did a preliminary estimate, and the total cost for improvements was up at $275,000. Once, understandably, they saw that ticket, it was, that was it. The petition was rescinded, and, and that's where e- every other street acceptance, uh, petition I've gotten, they've all fallen apart the same way. Um, per the Committee, the Committee recommended that the town, um, fund 10% of each project as, that's what they found attributable to the community as a whole, uh, to benefit the community as a whole. So, that put the appropriated cost per property owner at about $28,000 for each of the residents at Carmel Street. So, it's understandable, um, sticker shot. There's some, uh, considerations here for, if we were to change the current practice. Um, I think the first two go hand-in-hand, community support and, and costs. Um, and it's for that reason I just stated. It's, you go through, it hinges on town meeting vote, right? So, you need that support from the community, I think, and the costs are so high that you have to consider not only how the upfront costs are budgeted, but then how are the roadway improvements, um, you know, the actual construction, which is the lion's share of the budget, of, of, of the, of the cost. How are those financed as well? And then prioritization, um, let's just say there, there's a solution somewhere in here, and, um, how are these roadways prioritized, understanding that you, you just can't physically do 200 at once? Um, and, you know, we have a bandwidth here, not only budgetary, but also just as, as a staff. So, some consider, another consideration, uh, when we were discussing considerations, uh, KP Law had advised us to, um, the town of Dedham. They, they were in a pretty similar, um, situation as far as their number of, of unacceptable ways. Uh, so, they changed their policy five years ago. Um, they still follow Mass. General Law, but they categorized all their roadways into groups where the Board then used that to weigh the public benefit and determine if betterment should be applied. But from their website, under Frequently Asked Questions, um, it states, you know, in most cases, the town will pay 100% of the cost of improvements, but there may be some cases where the town will pay only a portion of the cost. In these cases, the town would assess a betterment. Um, they do require 100% of butter support and sign off and, uh, for grant of land rights and, and grant of land rights. And this is to, I think, indemnify the town for any future claims for losses or damages. Um, if town meeting votes to accept the way, then the way is added to the town's pavement management program. They, uh, on their website, they state that it's an 18-month process for street acceptance, and then you go into a 10-to-12-year queue for construction that's just based on their current backlog. Um, ours would likely be similar if we were to adopt this policy. Um, interestingly enough, I'll share with the Board that I've had conversations with the town engineer of Dedham, and, um, despite all this, they, they still have challenges. Um, they've accepted two roadways, and it's been five years since this has been implemented. Um, they have two more in the queue, which they're close to, he thinks, getting to that finish line, and about four more that have just started the process. I mean, we've accepted two in that timeframe as well. It's just, the, the deterrent, in, in his opinion, was, um, getting that unanimous support. And from, because, and I think it's, speaks to the Pompret Road example, it might not be the most important thing to everybody. Um, or, and then the other example that I brought up, the discussion that a resident had with Valerie and I, is not everyone wants their road paved. And some, you know, and getting like 10 residents together to uniformly say, you know, in unison, yes, this is what we all want. We all want a sidewalk on the side. We all want a roadway, you know, from, uh, to go from 18 feet to 20 feet wide. Um, it's, it, it can be challenging. And that is the end of my presentation. Um, and Sherin and I are here, along with Jamie and Valerie, to, to talk this through. Um, this is not, uh, a presentation that we'll talk about tonight, but
Yep.
we're happy to, um, discuss this further with the Board. Thank you.
Thanks, Paul.
Thank you.
I'll open it up to the Board first for any questions. Judy, go.
I'll start. I just want to say thank you very much for putting this together. Um, this is such a difficult conversation to have because for all the points that you said where these roads were constructed in some instances before some of us were even born in the room, um, you know, unfortunately, you know, in, in the public realm, if you're someone that's residing on a street that perhaps you didn't know at the time you purchased it, um, that you were in fact purchasing an unacceptable way. Um, you know, the real estate world, it's only as good as the information that's put into the multiple listing service or what the agent is able to disclose, if the buyer were to research it. Um, there are lenders now, when people purchase homes, that if they find out that a street is not on a public way, they might have issues with getting financing. Some banks don't have an issue with that. And so, sometimes people find out after the fact. Um, sitting in this seat, it's, I'm sympathetic to the comments and questions that I hear in town, and, and this is definitely something that, um, people have been impacted by and, and feel that they pay taxes, um, just like the rest of us, and they don't have the benefit of having quality streets. And I don't really have an acceptable answer for those parties, quite frankly. Um, so I'm particularly interested, uh, not to say that it's 100% the town's financial responsibility, but I'm curious with some of the best practices that have been done, and I'm curious, even at the state level, we can't be unique in being the only town or city that is facing this. So, are they, are there any conversations at the state level to come up with a state infrastructure program that cities and towns can take advantage of, um, that you're aware of?
To my knowledge, there aren't any such programs. Such programs are going to be extremely expensive, and as it is, there's so much money spent on the public ways that there's little room or little funding available for private ways. And, um, so I'm just sorry. I wanted to introduce myself. I'm Sherin Everett from KP Law. Thank you for having me here. I had prepared a presentation, but, you know, it, it could be a two-hour, three-hour discussion on how public ways are laid out, what the steps are. But I thought that we would engage in a conversation so that I could address what your questions were and perhaps engage in a dialogue with Paul, uh, as to what do you think the town should do? Um, are they coming to the town wanting, uh, the town to accept it? Are there any streets that, you've looked at all the streets, right? Are there any roadway conditions or some streets that can be put in front of the list?
Mm-hmm.
As, as he was mentioning, Dedham has a similar problem because most of its streets were developed, you know, prior to the subdivision control law coming into effect. And so, they have a lot of private ways that are in, some are in good shape, some are in terrible, terrible shape. And the primary factor that prevents them from becoming public ways is the cost. Now, some towns, uh, assess betterments. Uh, you are, the town, once it accepts a way as public, it has the right to assess betterments on the property owners so as to bring the subdivision, so as to bring these private ways up to sufficient standards. They don't have to bring it to subdivision standards. That's not required. But you want to have some uniformity and some standards as to what they must be bought up to. And the cost is a prohibitive factor. So, if you do a betterment, you don't, you know, you can ask to get consent of, you know, 80%, 100%, and that's the selectmen's policy as to where you want to go within that threshold. But you are able to assess betterments on all property owners, you know, usually, hopefully with their consent, but you can also do it without their consent. It's a tax that's imposed on all property owners for the purpose of making this public, this, this road that's going to become public, you know, in, improve standards. So, um, some towns, um, you know, just deal with it on a case-by-case basis to see when there are streets that they could accept. Um, Dedham has a policy that it worked on 2015. Uh, we worked on it with them. They have categories of streets that they do want to accept. For example, if there is a street that leads to a public amenity, that street has priority over some other streets. And so, if there's something that you want to do similar to Dedham, I would encourage you to think about preparing a policy on what streets you think should be accepted. Um, you know, if there are true streets that are better, you know, rather than streets that only lead to the subdivision or just lead to a few property owners. So, I recommend that you, um, come up with a policy and the steps that people need to take in order to make their roads public. It's a long and involved process. It is expensive. Uh, there is expense on the town side because you often do a lot of title research to find out from whom you should obtain those rights. Um, then it has to go to town meeting, and then we have 120 days after the close of town meeting to acquire those rights. And, um, most towns that I work with, they acquire their rights by eminent domain. Um, it's just an easier process, but we get everybody's consent so that we're not taking anybody's rights without their approval. Uh, but it's an efficient way of getting the rights done, and, um, as I said, it's, it's a long and convoluted process. Um, so, how would you like to, to structure this for the town? Would you like to start something like the Dedham policy and work through that?
Well, I think we could have a open discussion with the, with the Board on that. I mean, that was one example that, um, I thought from, um, not only an administration sense, but it's just, um, again, looking at it holistically, um, made sense. And, um... And I liked a couple things about it where they manage expectations. Understanding that these things are going to take time. As Sharon mentioned, it's a, it is, it's a convoluted, it's complicated. There's a lot of steps to take. You have to, you can't, and you have to be thorough with it, too, especially when it comes to conveyance of land rights and land surveys and title research. There are some implications there, that if you don't dot your i's and cross your t's, you're going to face exposure to certain liabilities and what have you, right? So I think in getting that unanimous, unanimous support piece of it, although it's been a little bit of a deterrent, I, I think it's really important to have that support.
Well, it takes a two-thirds vote at town meeting to accept roads that are not shown in a subdivision plan. So that's a pretty high standard. And the unfortunate thing is, when you have these old private ways and they want to get it accepted, is that usually there's, you know, these were not developed as part of subdivision. These were just, you know, ad hoc, you know, development as it happened. So most people don't have plans showing the streets. So initially, in order to start the street acceptance process, you have to have what's called a layout plan. A plan that shows the dimensions of the road as it's constructed on the ground, so you can locate, you know, where private property rights start and where the public road would begin. So the expense of preparing a layout plan is the initial deterrent. And usually we ask, at least for the towns I work with, they ask the petitioners to come up with a layout plan. So it's an expense that they would incur, but that's the initial step. Then, you know, the, it gets referred to the planning board for their recommendation. Then it comes back to the board of selectmen, you know, to vote that, yes, we are going to lay out this street as public. And then it goes to town meeting for the two-thirds vote. And the mean, and then after that, as, as Paul said, we have 120 days to acquire those rights. But when we do these things, we usually start with the researching those rights right in the get-go. So usually, before anything starts, I work with the developers and their attorneys to obtain a title certification as to who owns the roads, who, from whom we have to acquire the rights. So it, it takes place in a lockstep manner, you know, just when it's starting the development process.
Thank you, if I may. Thank you, Paul. Paul, thank you very much. Ms. Everett, thank you for being here and for this presentation. I have a couple of questions, if I may. Paul, I'll start with you. You had a slide, just a few, towards the end, it was cost of street acceptance, and it was a table with a blue heading, and it was towards the bottom. Thank you. And, and so you mentioned the total number, based on some calculations that you've done. So if a resident was to call you, and they just were curious, that they wanted to know, you know, what the estimated cost would be of their particular street, and if they wanted to know what you might deem the condition, is that something that's available to a resident?
Yes, sir. Yeah, it's, you know, I would put the caveat out there to the resident that it's a preliminary estimate, you know, engineer's estimate based on 2019 values. But yes, the inventory is definitely public record. Yeah, we, we actually did an inventory of all streets in town. So that would be something that is readily available.
And I think it's probably safe to say that the number is north of that number now, given the construction costs that we all understand.
Yeah, I would, I would say so.
Okay. Thank you. Ms. Everett, if I could ask you, and I've been to some of the MMA conference trainings on this, I really appreciate that. As Ms. O'Connell said, this is a huge problem that a lot of communities are facing. I wonder if you could speak to that. Are there any other communities in which you represent? Where do they lie in terms of comparison? Mr. Aluni, you mentioned we have around 200 unaccepted ways here in Wilmington. Is that average for the communities that you see? Is that more than some of the communities you see, less?
Well, some towns are more active in accepting streets. You know, I work with Salzburg. They very actively go through their private ways and make them public. They have a very good assessor who is very good in doing the research, so she almost doesn't need me. She does the preliminary work, prepares plans, and gets them going. So, and then some, some towns are just like yours, in which, you know, unfortunately, they have these private ways and they can't be accepted. And then, you know, scarce resources, and, and it leads to a situation where, you know, the towns plow, you know, you know, remove snow and ice and do some temporary repairs, but they're impaired in their ability to do more. Sorry, you had a question?
Thank you. And in your experience, I know here in Wilmington, obviously, you need a two-thirds majority to pass the vote at town meeting. I don't know what the bylaws of other communities are, but do you see oftentimes that these votes fail on the town meeting floor?
I've seen that towns are becoming more careful these days in what streets they bring up for acceptance. So previously, anybody who used to come and ask for petition, used to, you know, they would, the selectmen would say yes, and they would go through the acceptance process. But these days, I've seen towns becoming a lot more careful in assessing the condition of the road, what improvements need to be made to bring it up to standards. And then some are not hesitant in, in, you know, asking for betterments. It's unfortunate, but sometimes that's what needs to be done in order to accept the ways. And, you know, the property owners get a benefit, because they're cleared of legal liability for the condition of the roads, and they don't have to plow to maintain it. So it's, it's a, it's a balance.
And obviously, you talked about the cost, and we know that it can be cumbersome for communities, but in towns that are similar size to Wilmington, you know, Paul mentioned it earlier, we accepted two in the last couple of years. How does that rank in terms of other communities? I mean, are other communities accepting dozens at a time? Is it one at a time?
I don't think there are communities that accept a large number of streets. Most of them are subdivision roads that are accepted, and those can be accepted by a majority vote at town meetings, so they're much easier. I do get many, several instances in which there are just other private ways that are not subdivision roads that are brought up. But some towns do it regularly. I do, Real Estate for Lemonster, they usually have five, six roads a year that are brought up for acceptance. You know, then I go to some smaller towns, it's two or three. Some towns take a, you know, a few years to do a couple. So there's a, there's a whole range of those.
And Paul, I appreciate your researching the Dedham proposal, or their concept, their model, whatever you want to call it. But, I guess it's, from my perspective, a little disappointing here, they've only accepted two in the six years. No offense to those folks, I'm sure they're very nice people to the south of us. But, you know, and then look at that side by side, and we've done two in that time, and we don't, you know. And then to hear that, you know, you could be approved at town meeting, and then 10 to 12 years. I mean, I don't know how you would get a lot of buy-in from folks to say, you know, you got to give up some of your front yard and cross your fingers, and maybe you'll be on a list for a dozen years out. So I'm, I'm open to listening to that type of model, but, you know, I guess my, my final question would be that, you know, even if we didn't adopt a new model, and we just continued to forward what we have, I mean, I know it's a little early to be talking about articles just yet, but, I mean, maybe, maybe a better question for the manager, but is it on our radar to accept a few more at the, at the next town meeting next year? Or has that not come across your desk yet?
Yeah. It's, it's a fair question. It, it comes back to my, my earlier comment about bandwidth and finding, like, the, the time. And, and then the, it's like, we're, my staff is qualified to do the work. I have a licensed, Lansbury, I'm a licensed engineer, and it's just though, when it comes down to the championing the effort to reach out to all those members of the way and not having any gaps, right? And, and then in getting that buy-in, it, it's, it's very time-consuming. You could have an easy time for, to coordinate with one property owner, but then another one's just totally radio silent. So it's, it's challenging to meet those deadlines. You know, I could put a number out to you, like, two a year, right? I think I could be confident in saying, okay, but extrapolate that over my career and, you know, we're making a dent in this. But it's a step forward, right? So that would.
So Jeff, I don't know if I could, if there were you a little, just ask the same question. I mean, Jeff, is that something that you can anticipate for the coming year? Or is that something you've thought about or willing to think about?
You know, I'm certainly willing to think about it. One of the questions that I was going to pose and ask that perhaps Paul address, again, just to this point of the importance of having these roads that the town accepts meet certain standards. Perhaps if you could talk about some of the consequences if the town accepts roads that don't have proper drainage, that don't have a proper subbase, that don't have, you know, there's a whole set of circumstances you talked about before. But I think it's important to note that once the town accepts these roads, the liability rests with the town when there's situations that don't go right, whether somebody's yard gets flooded, or, so maybe you can talk a little bit about that.
If I may, just before you do that, I just wanted to, I'll close by saying thank you for the presentation, and I just couldn't agree with the comments that were made by Mrs. O'Connell at the beginning, that it is very difficult to have this conversation with a resident and not have a satisfactory answer to give them. It's frustrating, and the last thing I'll say is, in full disclosure, I do live on an unaccepted road myself, so. Thank you, and appreciate you, appreciate this conversation.
Yeah, yeah, from a construction standpoint, I think that's the, that's the biggest issue, right? It's the most expensive thing to address. And there are two things there. First off, the prescription to fix the problem, right, is, is more than just slapping a coat of pavement, is just dropping an overlay of pavement on the road. It's, it's getting into the full-depth reconstruction, changing grades, making more drastic improvements or changes, right, to a, to a neighborhood. And then second, it would be, when do you, when do you, when can you program that into not only the town's budget to improve, because you're, at that point, then exposed to liabilities? So the, it's almost like, would, would it be opening Pandora's box in that sense? Where then you, okay, so there's this unmanageable amount of unaccepted ways that are suddenly accepted, that are in, in the state, and they can't all be addressed in, in one year. It's, it's becoming more difficult to find a contractor, as I'm sure we've all experienced. Yeah, that's, I, I think that speaks to that. Bandwidth is certainly an issue.
If I may.
Yes.
Jamie, with all the operations standards of people at home, just quite simply, what Paul said is true. You know, if we were to accept something that wasn't built properly, especially at this point, we're accepting that liability, but then the product wouldn't degrade that much faster. And now we're faced with having to upgrade our staff. We would need more manpower. We're looking at an operations budget that might be dwindling. Now we're channeling our resources to a larger problem that, you know, really shouldn't have been fixed first before we logged it, so to speak. But based on, kind of, when Paul and I, and Valerie were talking, one of our ideas in the short term, we're kind of trying to get a, take the transparency out there. So one idea that we had was, I think to Ms. O'Connell's point, for residents that have questions that they never knew that they were on an unaccepted way, we could put a button on our engineering website that said, is my street accepted? And kind of, it'd be very transparent as to what that means. Have the full list of streets in town, whether or not they're accepted and unaccepted. So when people go to purchase a house or do some research, that information is shared with you. We're not trying to hide this from anybody. We want to do everything we can to try to get that information out, and that's important. And there are cases, too. Waltham Street's a good example of it. It's an industrial road, but it's not a residential road. But we got a call, a lot of times, the crux of these requests are that they just want the road paved. And we have this discussion about fixing drainage, the subbase is poor, and they kind of, they lose interest at that point. They just want their road paved. And then we do say, there's an option that you can chip in as abutters to pay to restructure, resurface your road, which is much less expensive, frankly, it doesn't solve the overall problem of having it become accepted. But in a case like Waltham Street, that road did get paved by the abutters. The town is not paying for that. And at the end of the day, people are just happy with the outcome. And they realize that that option is a far less expensive option compared to reconstructing standards that were made.
I just wanted to also tell you of this instance in which a, a town had a private way that was in horrible shape. I mean, residents were very, very upset, you know, the whole thing. We pay our taxes, why is this not accepted? And the road was in such a condition that, that the town couldn't accept it. And as Paul said, you can't spend public funds on private ways. And that's the overarching principle here. That's why you can't go in and fix things. That town obtained a special act that authorized the town to spend money to make major improvements to certain private ways, very limited private ways. And it was done on the condition that the improvements were paid by the abutters. But the abutters, once the work was done, the road remained private. And the owners were thereafter responsible for its maintenance. So I've seen a few instances in which that's done. That's another solution, because you at least get to fix the road, and thereafter it becomes somebody else's responsibility, not the town's. But it, it is an expensive program. It's difficult to administer. And, you know, you have to make policy decisions on which ones to accept and which ones to do. So sometimes it may not be worth it, so.
Ms. O'Connell, did you have a question earlier?
Paul?
Yes.
During your research on all these paper roads, unaccepted roads, unapproved roads, whatever we want to call them, did you find any of them that you could say, we could get these to accept it real quick, because the roadway is proper? It's just, you know, getting with the abutters of the roadway, so to speak?
Yeah. I have an estimate up there for roadways considered in good condition, where construction would be, you know, I estimated zero. But it's the, the upfront cost of the, of the survey work for those 14 roads. Like, how does, how would that get, get financed? And the legal fees and the attorney fees, and then, yeah, the coordination with the, with the abutters. So if that were, and to Jamie's point, with the transparency, you know, maybe having this information available on the website then would be helpful for folks to look and say, all right, click, here's my roadway. Okay, look, this is, this roadway is considered in good condition. There's a good chance that we could get this thing accepted. You know, it's another interesting, kind of, point about this is that, like, it's, these roadways that are in good condition, though, it's not in the forefront of people's minds, right? It's only in the forefront of folks' minds when they're in the bottom half of that. And that's another challenge altogether, is like, okay, yeah, I'll do it next year. Yeah, I'll do it in a couple of years. It's like, motivate, getting the motivation to not perpetuate the problem for, like, another generation, right? And that, like, the next generation.
Pass the law.
Speaking of that, about perpetuating, and I don't want to take off of this, but it, just, from my mindset, in summary, it's, this has been a conversation that has been discussed now for a number of years. And not to be taken out of context, that doesn't seem to be an identified community solution we continue to talk about coming up with a solution. And I respect that, and there's value in doing that. But I'm also thinking of the homeowner at home that's on an unaccepted street that doesn't have an established track to run on, that they can somehow get subsidized into a situation if they bought a house that was built in the 40s or 50s, and they did in fact buy on an unaccepted way. They're going to be relying to potentially go to town meeting with a petition and rely on voters that, you know, don't want to have their tax dollars potentially going to a road that they don't particularly benefit from. So I would just want to say for the record, I'd like to continue this discussion. I don't think we're going to solve it tonight. But if we have a. But if we have a programmatic design for them and what that looks like, I will say I do have, in saying that I want to be supportive of a resident or family or a neighborhood street or whatever the case may be, I'm very cognizant of what Paul has stated and others have stated in terms of the workload that it's going to take. And I don't necessarily know that a layperson respectfully knows some of the terms that have been used tonight in terms of getting rights and that they own to a certain distance into the street and kind of rewriting deeds and rewriting titles and all the legal costs and all of the administrative work that goes to calling, you know, you think about it. If I asked you to call everybody on your street and tell them I'm having a block party, you know, talk about RSVPs. I mean, this is RSVPs for paving. And I do not want to see our engineering department, you know, get bogged down in one specialized project, whether that means we come up with a plan and we have to look to see about outsourcing a portion of this. You know, I just don't know that I would want the town engineer, I'm not saying it's not of value, but, you know, you could make this a full-time job based on what this is alone. And you have to know that you have the purse to go along with it. So I think it's, I don't think it's going to be solved, but I do have concerns about the deployment of resources. I just want to go on the record saying that. And then what I'm going to finish with is that there are houses that are on unaccepted streets that are getting plucked off onesie twosie with redevelopment. And then there's also building permits that are going out for future development that might be in subdivisions. What would you say to me if I asked you the question, are we still issuing building permits on unaccepted streets in an essence perpetuating the same issue futuristically with new homeowners on existing unaccepted streets? So are we ever going to fully catch up? Is this, this is going to be a forever revolving problem?
Good question. I'll try not to make the director of planning and conservation cringe with my answer.
Hopefully I didn't put myself on a bad list for just calling it a ball or a strike.
No, I think, I think for, for like construction of paper streets for like that vacant parcel where there's a right-of-way but a roadway, but it's unimproved. I think there are the regulations that we have in place with either subdivision control law or the 81G process with an applicant or developer has to meet those conditions and it gets reviewed by the planning board and our community development technical review team, CDT R. So that's comprised of Mr. McGoldy, Valerie heads it, myself, police, fire, border health and the building inspector assessors. So in that sense, the problem is not being perpetuated. Are there though, private ways or unaccepted ways that are constructed and there's a house being tore, like a tear-down rebuild? We don't have much of a say there in that case. What we, Valerie and I do is we do meet with developers frequently and we do our best to be proactive. I can think of one roadway in particular, the intersection of Laurel and Olive where a developer was doing that and put in, offered to put an overlay in just that one section. So it was just a, it was essentially a patch as part of the work because the roadway was in such poor condition. So we're trying to be proactive as a staff to address that. I don't know that there's a way to just completely wipe it out completely from not ever happening again. But I think the regulations we have in place now do prevent, at the very least, new roadways being built without being built properly and with oversight and then being teed up for acceptance.
In the essence of time, I'm going to go to Kevin because he hasn't spoken yet. And then we're going to open it up to the, to the members.
Thank you.
So the new, I just want to follow up on what you just finished with. So a new development that's being put in there, it's all going to be accepted way now?
So if there was, let's, we can bring up a recently permitted project. It was off of Hopkins Street, Highland Estates. Yeah, there's a large parcel of land that's being subdivided into 16 or 17 individual single-family home lots. Yes, that roadway has to be built to town standards and go through the planning board review process. The planning board has the right to waive certain requirements, but the roadway, there's elements that just aren't waived with respect to roadway construction and then things of that nature.
So it will be accepted?
Correct.
Okay. Now, I know we've talked in the past. I, first off, I appreciate the presentation again. Thank you for the PowerPoint information. There are some streets that are out there that I, I think when we've talked, you know, they have sidewalks and they're in great condition, but they've just not, they're still unaccepted. Is it the developer who dropped the ball on that? I mean, how, what happened? Why wasn't a street that, you know, that looks great with sidewalks, it's unaccepted?
Yeah.
Why, you know, what would be some of the reasons, you think?
You'd have to look at it on a case-by-case basis. I can tell you from when, since Valerie and I started, I don't know that there's, that's happened yet. I can tell you like an example of a roadway that it was, it's, was within an existing, like a paper street. It was a paper street scenario. So the, is a, paper street is just a right-of-way with lots adjoining it and with no roadway built out. So a developer would come in and build the roadway to town standards now. But before that roadway was accepted, all of the folks that, all the residents or property owners adjoining that right-of-way would have to grant their land rights so that they, what's the enticement for them to go to reach out to all of those residents to say, okay, let's convey your land rights over? So like those instruments were never conveyed to the, or created to convey the land rights and the entire right-of-way to the town.
I'm sure, I think Mr. McGoldy had something to add.
To add to that, Mr. Kyra, my mind goes back to when I was trying to buy my first stock. I fell in love with this Ford stock. I had a real shiny port paint on it and my father taught me to feel the metal underneath. You really don't know what you're buying when you can't see it. So a lot of, in a lot of those cases, that street, although the pavement might look okay, might lack proper drainage, might have been built on a bed of peat, peat moss rather than proper gravel. And so, you know, there might be reasons that you just can't see, but we may or may not have a record or maybe it's just not laid out in the right spot. So that's a great point, but I think a lot of it too is just what you can't, what you can't see.
And another question in regards to, say, public safety. So if there's an unaccepted way that has a pothole that's yay big and this deep and, I mean, the town comes and fills that in for public safety?
I'll let Mr. McGoldy.
Yeah, we certainly do. And that's one of the things that we would like to put on the website as well in full disclosure to let people know that, you know, their tax dollars are paying for maintenance on all roads that they travel on, not necessarily just the road that they live on. And so I think we have about 15 or so gravel roads that are unaccepted. And when, as time permits, we do grade these gravel roads, certainly depending on how bad the winter is and the spring thaw, a lot of these roads. We try to get them to a point where they're passable for public safety vehicles. We feel that's our obligation, which is also why we plow them. And certainly we patch, we patch them for public safety access as well. And that is all roads.
Yeah, great. Thank you for that. I just wanted the public to realize that the town still does that type of service as well. And maybe through the chair to Mr. McGoldy again, regarding chapter 90 programs, I know that the more accepted ways, the more funding the town gets back. Is that how that works? Could you explain?
There's a magic formula that's based on accepted road miles and a little bit is also is the population in town. And the third part of that is the amount of employment the town offers. So they take those three factors and they throw it into a magic formula. Each town is divvied up a different portion of that transportation bond bill. Wilmington gets approximately just under $800,000 we have for the last several years. To put that in perspective, if we're basing that on 100 miles of accepted road, we're essentially getting $8,000 per road, per accepted road mile. That really doesn't go too far when you're looking at paving a mile of roadway, which would be above $250,000 paved. So it's certainly not a dollar for dollar. But it does behoove us to, obviously, the more accepted roads we have, the more money we have, but it's a very small amount of money when you look at it in comparison.
Thank you.
All right. I know the secretary wanted to say something, then we're going to open it up to the members of the audience.
So one of the things that some towns do is to get very involved in the subdivision process and maybe Valerie already do this. Some towns, when they're, when they're dealing with the subdivision approval, they require the developer who at that time owns all the land to give the town a deed to all the subdivision roads. So what we do is we record those easements with the registry of deeds and we provide that when they're accepted as public ways by town meeting, those rights, the town can exercise those rights at that time. And this is done before any of the lots are conveyed. That's when the developer owns everything, you know, including the fee in the roads. And that's a good time to get it because once they start divvying up the lots, then everybody gets a little piece of the road. And so it becomes much harder to coordinate later when you're going to go to 20 abutters, whereas you could have got, received it from the developer in the first place. So there is a lot of planning that can happen during the subdivision process.
So what, for the board's sake, what we currently do is a couple of things. We ask for layout plans so that, it's actually kind of easy when it's a subdivision because you have one owner to deal with. It's a big plot of land. They're drawing the lines and essentially you have to get just sign off from one person, which is what ended up being the case when we accepted Mankron Road, one of the ones we did in the last few years. We also kind of a similar, I guess a different approach, but a similar outcome. We ask the developer to retain ownership of the roadway in our decisions. So that developer isn't giving a piece of the road to the parcels, is keeping that roadway, ownership of the roadway so that at the end, there's all the incentive in the world for him to want to get rid of owning that roadway and have it accepted. So we are, we are proactive with the subdivision roads. Like I said, those are the easy ones. The challenge is when you have a lot of owners who need to agree and give up their property rights.
Okay, I'd like to open it up to the members of the audience. Please stand up, state your name and address for the record and ask your question, please.
Ryan, Seven Dotmouth Avenue. And just Mr. Kyra brought up a road that was done and not accepted. That's Ashwood Ave. The end of Ashwood, all the way down to the bottom. I mean, it's, it's complete. It has sidewalks, it has drainage, it has pavement, but I do a lot of research and that is one of those roads. I live on Dotmouth Ave. It's an unaccepted street and when I bought it, I didn't know. But I do know that I had a plot plan signed by Eastern Bank. It was okay for me to buy this. I have stones. It's all marked out. I didn't know that I owned to the middle of the street. And like I said, I do a lot of research and I was looking, I think it was in Arlington, but I found this out that something's going on. And the people that live there are liable to the center of the street. Is that just the length of our property? What I'm getting at is what if there was a tower that's a, because of a pothole? Are we liable for that?
If it's a private way, yes.
You know? Unaccepted street. Private road, private way, in my opinion, is a roadway with maybe one, two houses on it, a driveway, you know, but somebody buys a lot of land, you put a driveway, you put a house there, a house there. You have seven houses. It's not a private road. Somebody's walking down the street. People come down my street, they walk down my street, they walk back. What if there was a trip right there, ain't it? Are we liable for it? Does that go on us? And how is that fair?
I think you're liable only if you knew of the condition. If it was an obvious defect, you knew about it and nothing was done. I think the standard is pretty high to put liability onto private property owners for that.
But if somebody, if somebody doesn't realize, like I didn't realize for years that I lived on an unaccepted street, I bought a house on an unaccepted street, I probably wouldn't have bought that house if I had known the consequences of owning it. You know what I mean? Been there 30 years. We had an episode on my street. Because it was a private road, it wasn't handled the way I thought it should have been handled. Private contractor did something and, you know, two of myself and two other neighbors had paid to have pavement done because the person thought he wasn't, you know, responsible for what happened. And he was. So that's what, on Mr. O'Connell's thing is, you know, I talk to people, they don't even know. I put on Facebook about unaccepted streets and they're like, what's an unaccepted street? They have no idea. I have no idea. You know, I've done a lot of work to my yard. I have a nice house and I pay a lot of taxes, in my opinion. And you're not getting equal. You know what I mean? Should be equal. You all pay taxes, they all should be equal. This is kind of disgusting to have 200 something streets that are unacceptable and more of all paying taxes. Doesn't matter what we do. We have a house, put it on an accepted road, an unaccepted road, we're still taxed the same. So that's all.
Does anybody else have any questions? Comments? Any further comments or questions from the board? Okay. Thank you both for coming tonight. Appreciate it and for the presentation that you also sent. This is a lot to take in and I agree with Selectman O'Connell that it's something I think we need to continue discussions on and figure things out about. So more to come, right?
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Have a good night.
Thanks.
Okay. I do want to announce that we will be going into executive session at the end of this meeting for the purpose of discussing multi-district litigation relative to per and polyfluoroalkyl substances PFAS in accordance with Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A3, as an open meeting may have detrimental effect on the town's litigation position, which the chairman so declares. I would like to now move on to communications.
Yes, so the first communication is a update from Paul Aluni, our town engineer, with regard to the projects that are on the Transportation Improvement Plan. This is a funding plan that is approved through the Metropolitan Planning Organization. They look at projects from various parts of the state and as noted here, we have five particular projects. The first being Lowell and Wilburn Street intersection. It's at 75% design. It's slated to be, the work is slated to start in the fiscal year 2023. That's a federal fiscal year, followed by the bridge project at Butters Row, also fiscal, federal fiscal year 2023. In fact, there's just a notice that went out today about the public comment period. It's at 25% design stage. We have a bridge project, Route 38 over the MBTA tracks, again fiscal 23, 25% design stage. Bridge project, Route 129 over Route 93, fiscal 25. And then the Main Street corridor improvement project, fiscal 25 and 26, which is at 75% design stage. I would just note that these, it's not uncommon for these dates to be moved around and in fact, they have been in the past. It depends upon availability of funding and readiness for the project. And also you'll note that there's some level of detail in the backup on each of these projects. And also, you'll note that there's some level of detail in the backup on each of these projects. Next is a memo from me to the board with regard to PFAS. And just wanted to provide an update to the board. The carbon beds were successfully changed out the week of October 25th. The Sargent Water Treatment Plant was temporarily back online to take a sample on November 1st, again, with a request to expedite the results. We received the results on November 5th, indicating a non-detect in the parts per trillion. So you'll recall that we, the trigger event, so to speak, that prompted discussion was we had a twenty point six parts per trillion read. A subsequent reading after the, some of the wells were shut down, turned out to be sixteen point five. And then with the carbon beds changed out, the number is now a non-detect. It is also noteworthy that DEP, subsequent to the conversation that the, that Mike Woods and Joel Abell head with the board at your last meeting, the DEP advised that since the two samples, the twenty point six and the sixteen point five, were taken within a thirty day period, that for purposes of publicizing the information, you, we would take the average of the two, which in turn falls at eighteen point five, five parts per trillion, which is below the twenty parts trigger point, and does not require a public notification process. But notwithstanding the, that we didn't hit the legal trigger, we are going forward with a public notice. And the information continues to be updated on the town's website. Next is a memo from me to the board with regard to reference in the inhabitant bylaws and the Town Managers Act and zoning bylaws. As you know, and we'll talk about this a little bit later, the inhabitant bylaw committee has been going through an exhaustive process of preparing recommendations for revisions. One of the items that I was asked to bring before the board in, in light of the fact that the board has expressed a desire to change the name of the Board of Selectmen to Select Board. Apparently, there are communities that reference that term either as one word or two. And so I'm simply just asking for some direction from the board for purposes of that revision as to whether the reference of Select Board should be a one word or two. And this will be a board to consider later in the agenda. Next is correspondence from me to the board with regard to the ARPA funds. This is the American Rescue Plan Act. You'll recall, there was a memo back in June that talked about the money that is being made available to the town. It's a little over seven million dollars. We have received an initial installment of a portion of those funds. And so what, presenting here is, is a recommendation for the board to consider in terms of the expenditure of these funds. And essentially, the first project that is being proposed is a replacement of a water line on Woburn Street, which essentially would run from the Woburn Street School to Lowell Street. Five point five million dollars is our, the estimated cost at this point. As I noted earlier, this would change out the existing water line and install a sixteen inch water line, which would provide the appropriate capacity if at some point in the future, a decision is made to tie this into the MWR system. Then separately, it, we have about three thousand catch basins throughout town, and many of them are in some measure of distress or disrepair. This would propose approximately two hundred of the existing catch basins. And it's not only the catch basin itself, but it's the, the drainage and associated infrastructure that takes that water and appropriately distributes it. The estimated cost there is a million dollars. We also have, unfortunately, the need for ongoing contact tracing, both on the town side as well as the school. And the, we have people that we have hired to work on a limited basis, part-time basis essentially, to engage in the contact tracing. Certainly, my sincere hope is, over the next six months or thereabouts, it, that we'll be beyond this. But I've suggested fifty thousand dollars be earmarked for that purpose. Then the, the next one is provide grants for facade and streetscape improvements. You'll recall, the Economic Development Committee has been very engaged in efforts to develop some suggestions that would improve the town's business attraction for businesses. There was a, a plan that was prepared under this Rapid Recovery Plan by a consultant. Then it was recently released. And some of the recommendations from that plan call for grants that would be made available to property owners, business owners, essentially with the target area being Main Street up to 129 in the, in that stretch out towards 93. And so the recommendation is to direct three hundred thousand dollars for grants to address facade and streetscape improvements. Similarly, suggesting that as part of an effort to try to encourage businesses, both to expand and to come to Wilmington, suggesting a branding and marketing effort be engaged, where we would both through existing staff, as well as folks that are schooled in this type of thing, try to develop some, kind of, almost like a tagline, if you will, as well as, as one instrument, so to speak, to use in, in further marketing the town. You'll probably recall the I Love New York symbol and the, the reference that has been out there for many, many years. That, another example is the, the sign that you see when you, or used to anyways, when you cross the border into Maine, The Way Life Should Be. Those are the kind of things that are quick logos and, and taglines to try to attract and really distinguish Wilmington from its other communities. I would note that Reading, for example, a few years ago, received a, a grant and went, went through a process. I think they may be continuing with that process to, to develop a branding and marketing campaign. And then with regard to grant administration, this grant program is administered or is directed, overseen by the U.S. Department of Treasury. There is going to be, obviously, with any grant, and certainly a grant of this size, reporting requirements. We, we want to make sure we're doing everything we need to be in terms of crossing the Ts and dotting the Is with respect to how the money is being accounted for, how it's being spent. And so there is going to be some measure of grant administration that quite frankly is just beyond the bandwidth that we have in, in the planning office. Additionally, if this, if the board is receptive to this idea of the facade grants, we're going to need to have personnel or a consultant to assist with develop, not only developing the program, but also tracking and administering those grants. So that is an item under board to consider.
Through, through the chair. So you're looking for the board to approve this expenditure?
Yes, I'm, I'm looking for a vote from the board that would confirm that this is a reasonable, appropriate direction to be using these funds. And as, one of the things that I also noted in the memo is that the funds have to be obligated by 12/31/2024 and expended by 12/31/2026. So if the board is receptive to this, this approach, then we would begin the process of, in, in terms of the infrastructure, for example, getting more detailed specifications and bids out. And with regard to the grant program, with Valerie and the Economic Development Committee beginning to more fully detail how those programs would operate.
Because I, I don't see this on a board to consider item for this evening. So you're going to put this on for next meeting?
Yeah, I, I didn't think that the board would necessarily want to make a decision tonight. But at, at a subsequent meeting, perhaps the, either the meeting of the twenty, I think it's the 22nd or the 13th.
Okay, I must, I misunderstood. I thought you said it was on the board to consider for this evening. The, just a, a couple of questions on this. For the grants for the facade and streetscape improvements, who's going to be monitoring? So we're going to be giving grants to a business to enhance their look, or whatever it might be. So who, who monitors that and who makes the selection? So say you have, you know, fifty people apply for it, but you only have enough money for ten. Who, how does, how's that working?
Well, so one of the things, yeah, one of the things that's going to have to happen is there'll be a, kind of a scoring system, so to speak, that, you know, would identify criteria that perhaps would have points associated with the criteria. So for example, if it's within the target area, certainly, we wouldn't bar anybody from, any businesses even outside the target area from applying. But the, if, if a business within the 38, 129 corridor applied, they would likely get more points than someone outside the corridor. There would have to be some design parameters that would be developed by the group. And, and Valerie, you want to add to that?
Yeah, I think those types of details would be worked out before we, as the grant program. So we would figure out what, what committee is reviewing the applications, the scoring for applications, what's eligible even for grant work. You know, what types of work do we want to see? Do we want it to be storefronts and signage? Or do we want to expand it to outdoor seating areas? So all of those details would be worked out with the economic development committee and staff and, and a committee to sort of come up with the programming that we're going to do. And then a consultant would ideally kind of help with that and monitor it and be able to keep track of the financials.
So, so does this mean we'll be hiring more people for the town? You're saying a consultant? So does the three hundred thousand include the hiring of more people?
No, the, the hundred thousand that I referenced as, you know, grant admin, the expectation is that those costs would be covered in, in that hundred thousand.
In that?
Yes.
So that would be hiring someone or consultant with that hundred thousand?
Right. I, there's really two, I guess, what I would consider major elements. One is the overarching administration and, and, and reporting of this seven million dollars, how it's being expended, meeting the, whatever the reporting requirements are that Treasury has. And then separately, whether it's the same consultant or a separate one, having a more detailed focus on developing this grant process and, and reviewing grant applications and so on.
And, and I know you may not have thought further on this. So when this, when this runs out, this hundred thousand runs out for the person that we're bringing in, the consultant or whoever, then does the town have to pay, or is it the program over? I mean, is the town ultimately hiring a new person after this grant money runs out? Or is the program done? The three hundred thousand for the businesses grants are gone? Are we going to be hiring another person?
I would expect that the, we would not be hiring another person that would exist beyond the term of this program, whether it's, again, a consultant that, you know, is on a project basis or, or as in some grants that have, the town has had in the past, whether, where it's a, a person that works for the town just for the duration of the grant. In either event, it's my expectation that once the funds are exhausted, then, then that, that would be it.
And then, then one last question on the branding and marketing. We, I think the Economic Development Committee just did a great PSA, a public service announcement that was shown to us by the chairman, Mike Shampoo, at a meeting. And so what, do we need to put fifty thousand dollars in this branding and marketing when we already just developed one? We paid money for it, and it's out there for the public to see and view? So I, I just.
It's a different scope. So that was a, like, come to Wilmington. This, this, that's what the video was, like, a glimpse of Wilmington. We want to try and get out to, you know, realtors and commercial realtors and different people to bring people to Wilmington. The branding and marketing is more an ongoing program, whether it be, you know, some marketing materials that we could hand out, some signage that we would, that we would put up. It's, it's different. It's more going, it ties in with the, it ties in with the, like, with the facade and all that. There you go. Valerie has it right there. Yep.
What is that? Can we have a copy of that?
Yeah. This is, this is our Rapid Recovery Plan that was done for us.
We have one somewhere.
There's five projects outlined in here. We got a grant from the state to do this plan. The goal for, and a bunch of towns participated. And the goal was to come up with projects that can, you know, put some money back into businesses, get them, get them some resources. And one of the first projects is creating a brand and then using that brand, which when we say brand, like, you know, a visual, like a, a.
A logo.
A logo.
Yeah.
Yeah, like a logo and a tagline. You know, we joke about Hop Town because, you know, hops was our past and everything. But using, developing that and then using it to do shared marketing. So what we heard, there was a lot of survey work done as part of this process. And the businesses that are impacted by COVID in town, the highest thing that they said that they would be interested in was shared marketing. So it would be coming up with that brand, the tagline and everything. And then doing, the consultant would be doing training to have those businesses use that branding to do social media marketing, you know, using our, our developed branding. So it's a way to have those local businesses market themselves, but also we provide a shared, a shared draw, like something that looks really familiar in multiple places.
And, and again, that, that consultant comes out of the hundred thousand? Or it comes out of the three hundred thousand?
That has its own.
Or is it a commodity separate line item for the town to pay for?
That has its own branding and marketing. Fifty thousand would be the consultant for that.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
Next is a memo from me with regard to the tax classification hearing, which is scheduled for the next meeting on the 22nd. As you know, this is, happens at the same time of the year, every year. Unfortunately, this year, due to some staffing challenges with the outfit that we contract for appraisal services, Vision Government Solutions, they've had some turnover, some lack of staffing, or challenges getting positions filled. So Karen Rashes, the principal assessor, doesn't have the information that she needs to be able to make the full presentation on the 22nd. So my request is that the board open the hearing on the 22nd, as would be customary. And Karen can come in and provide some preliminary. And Karen can come in and provide some preliminary information, essentially explain more in detail why we are where we are. But then also requesting that the board continue the hearing and hold a special meeting on the twenty-ninth of November, which is the last meeting, last Monday of November, that would allow the process to conclude at that point and the board ultimately make a decision. The importance of doing this on that timeline as opposed to waiting until the thirteenth of December is that there's a whole series of events that need to happen here. Once, once the board makes its decision on the classification process, Department of Revenue needs to review and ultimately approve and set the tax rate, which then comes back to the town. Treasurer Collector then has to input that into the system and generate tax bills, which in turn have to get sent, printed and sent to the mailhouse. And all that has to take place by or before January first. So it's, it's kind of crunch time. Next is a memo from the IT Director. Just again noting that the town, we were one of thirty-four communities and school districts to be recognized for our efforts in engaging employees in cybersecurity training. In order to be eligible for this, we needed seventy-five percent participation. We had over ninety percent. I think this, this is something the board is going to hear more of because it's just so important. John noted that something in the order of, last year, about half of the ransomware attacks were targeting municipalities. So this is something we need to be, continue to be vigilant on. Next memo is from Rob Peterson, who chairs the inhabitant bylaw committee. He is presenting the board with a legal analysis with respect to the proposed revisions to the inhabitant bylaws. This is certainly not meant to be acted upon this evening. But there, as part of the process going forward here, there will be a document, a draft document, received by the town probably in December that will outline the proposed changes to be made, and that will trigger a forty-five day review period. So they'll, the expectation is that Mr. Peterson and the town clerk and the other members of the committee will be back before the board to have a further discussion about the approach to be taken. Essentially, there are some changes, simply the numerical sequence of things to make the document more user-friendly. And then separately are changes in text. Some elements of the bylaw are no longer relevant, and so those kind of changes will need to be considered as well, with the ultimate goal of having articles prepared for town meeting to consider. And then, next I have a memo from Beth Lawrence and the town clerk with regard to the precincting. And we're happy to report that based upon the board's vote from a couple of meetings ago, the state has approved the changes that were made. We would note that there were seven hundred eighty-four total housing units that were impacted by this change. Seven hundred and seventy-one single-family, one of the Avalons, and twelve, two families of that number. Hundred and seventy-three moved their polling location. Of that, one hundred and sixty-seven were single-family homes. And twelve, two families will be voting in a new location. So we will be providing information specifically targeting that group as well as just information to voters at large about the changes. Next is just a memo from me with regard to the status of the budget process. I met with department heads at our monthly department head meeting to review or to provide instructions with regard to the preparation of the operating budget. The deadline for submission of capital budgets was last week. So that review process will begin. And over the course of the next month or so, departments will be preparing and submitting operating budgets. And discussions will also be taking place with the school department. And I believe at that point, we're at board to consider. The first item was already addressed, which was the approval of Jewett Drive construction, the earth removal. The second board to consider was the, conducting the Santa parade. Then we also have a board to consider signing an Alcohol Beverage Control Commission certification relative to a change in officers and directors. This is at Target. This, as you know, we periodically have these come before the board. Pretty straightforward. There is not, it's just a change in management. And it was specified in the filing here as to the changes. Target's updating its officers to remove Don Eldrich, President Director, Thomas Leach, Treasurer Director, and Ron Hodge, Secretary and Director, and replace them with Matthew Gertry, President Director, Ryan Gretch, or Gretchi, Secretary Director, and Daniel Bean, Treasurer. Sarah Razakis as Director. And then the secretary, Assistant Secretary is staying the same.
All right, so a motion.
Show move.
Second.
On favor? So move, accepted.
Okay, and then next under the board to consider is a request from the Director of Veterans Services, Lou Semaglia, with regard to placing a bench at Silver Lake in honor of, this on Main Street section of Silver Lake, in honor of Robert Brown. And I see our Veterans Director is here, and he may wish to speak in more detail to this.
Mr. Semaglia, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm Aglia, Veteran Director of Veterans Services. I'd like to defer my time to start here with Mr. Brown, Aaron Brown, who's Robert's son.
Yeah. I just want permission to build a bench on the Silver Lake Memorial.
It's, it's a bench that's going to be, obviously, with the plaque on it, recognizing his father for service to a country in the United States Navy. It's not going to cost the town any money. We're just asking if we could put it up there on Main Street at Silver Lake where the flagpole is. And our, you know, the other monuments is becoming, we're getting a lot of feedback from people in town that it's becoming like a little Veterans Memorial Park, if you will. So I think Mr. Brown's bench would be a perfect fit there. And just on a personal note, when I got back from my deployment in nineteen ninety-one, I met Mr. Brown through some veterans organizations in town, along with some other older vets at the time. And they kind of took me under their wing and showed me what Wilmington is like and getting involved with Honor Guards and things like that. So I knew his father many years ago, and I think it would be a great addition to our Veterans Memorial Park.
Thank you both. I agree, and I appreciate you staying so late in the meeting to, to see this through. I'll take a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the request.
Okay, and we have a second. On favor? Approved. Can't wait to see it. Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Next under board to consider, the revision to the selectmen's reference in the inhabit bylaws, Town Managers Act and zoning bylaws. Is there a recommendation as to whether it should be one or two words?
I'm going to open this up just to get everybody's opinion, because, does anybody have a vision on that? Whether it should be one word or two, select board? I'm trying to think where I see, I, I- I kind of think it should be one, but I'm open to two. Any comments?
Yeah, I think it should be one.
Yeah.
I mean, I, what do the English professors of the world say?
I know, I know, because it's not a word, it's one.
So that's, I mean-
Yeah, exactly.
I personally don't have any preference. I'd want, I would just say for me, I'd want something that's grammatically correct. And I don't know that it's, I don't know how you verify that, but that's, that's what I would be looking for, is just to know that we're grammatically correct.
Kevin?
Yeah, no, I would agree with Ms. O'Connell about it. I would rather it be grammatically correct. So if that means that we need to table it to find out from someone?
I'm, I'm strong in math, English, I, I was in the-
Well, I, I think we can fairly say it's a made-up word. I don't think you'd see it in a dictionary, so.
I think, I mean, it's been, it's certainly-
It's used in different towns.
Both ways.
Yeah, I've seen it both ways. I'm, honestly, I don't have an aversion.
I mean, what is the MMA recommending? Do they, have they put out a recommendation of any kind?
I don't think so.
That's a good thought, the MMA. And then also, how about the inhabitant bylaw? What do they recommend? They did all this hard work. I mean, are they saying two words, one word?
Dave, we, we were talking two words.
Oh, you were?
Two words.
Yeah.
I think, I'm good with two words.
But we decided to bring it to the board to make-
So my recommendation is to, to make it two words, select board, if, unless you feel strongly about taking it up at another meeting. Any other comments? So I'm going to put out the, do I have a motion to change it to select board?
Select board.
Two words.
Two words.
Got a second?
Discussion?
Yes, discussion.
Would this need to include the words Wilmington or?
Well, it's, I think it's in, in different places within the bylaw, the Wilmington inhabit bylaws itself. I think it, I don't think it necessarily has to have Wilmington in it, you know, ahead of each reference to Board of Selectmen, or Select Board, rather.
And that brings up a good point, because I was thinking the same thing, Mr. Bendel. But I was thinking, does it need to have the word town in front of it? Just like you have school committee, do you need to have town Select Board? I don't know if that's a crazy thought or not, but-
Perhaps we should push it off to another.
You know, I-
Maybe we should, I'm going to, I think we should push it off. I, I feel like we're not at a place where we can, you know, myself included. Those are good questions. It should be Wilmington Select Board, Town Select Board, so.
I think Wilmington Select Board sounds better.
I agree. I think we should probably get clear.
So if there's no sense of urgency?
Through the, to, to Mr. Hull's point, it's Wilmington. And I think the, the whole, the whole article is about Wilmington. So I don't know that we need to reference it again. I'm just bringing up, because you have school, should you have town? That's, that's mine.
You mean, just delineating that it's the town governing board versus the school governing board?
Right.
To know what purview it's in, essentially?
I guess, yeah.
I think Wilmington.
But it's-
Yeah.
Just as a reminder for folks who are watching at home, this will need to be voted on at town meeting. This will not be decided by this board.
No, no, no.
Nope.
This is just to take it to the next step.
Right. I mean, I suppose it's understood, it's Wilmington, it's town.
Yeah, I think it's implied.
So I, you know, I just thought I'd throw it out.
Does the board wish to table this and discuss it at a later time? Or does the board have a preference?
I'm okay with voting tonight, but I'm, I'm, whatever the consensus is. Can we get a, a feel what people would like to do? Do you do, what would you like to do?
I'm, I'm fine to vote for it tonight. I mean, Karen? It sounds like the grammatically correct isn't going to be resolved because it's been seen both ways.
Right. All right, I'm going to put forth a motion to, I have to read it here. For revision to be, for selectmen reference in inhabitant bylaws, Town Managers Act and zoning bylaws to be referenced as Select Board, two words. Second. On favor?
All right.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So now we have a board to consider request of Kevin Carver, sons of Italy, to use the Town Common Municipal Parking Lot on Sunday, December twelfth, nine AM to one PM for the purpose of drive-by annual members' children's Christmas party.
Fun.
Yeah.
Who is to say if yours?
It's similar to what we did last year, just to be COVID-safe.
Yep.
The members' children, we usually have a Christmas party for them, but last year we couldn't. We did sort of a drive-by, and Santa happened to show up. And we'll hope and he does that again.
Awesome.
So.
Great. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Okay, sorry.
No, I was going to offer a motion to approve the request.
All right, second?
Second.
All right. Approved. Getting tired, I can't think.
All right, so next one is-
Do we need a vote on that?
Yeah, I think-
Yeah, it was approved.
Oh, we don't need to call for the vote.
Yeah, all in favor?
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you. Then the final board to consider is to continue the tax classification hearing to November twenty-ninth. So it would be opened on the twenty-second and then continued to a special meeting on the twenty-ninth without any other business other than the tax classification hearing.
Okay, any discussion on that?
So move.
Second.
Second, all in favor? Okay, approved.
Just a question on the target licensing.
Sure.
There's only four lines. Do you want me to sign beside it or does not?
Yeah, I guess if you could, yeah, I didn't realize there's only four lines, but-
Okay, it doesn't-
Yeah, it's fine.
All right, then we'll go to public comments. Are there any public comments? No public comments. Any announcements? Yes, Mr. Bendel?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just wanted to encourage folks to attend our annual Veterans Day ceremony this coming Thursday at eleven o'clock on the Town Common. And want to give a special shout-out and then thanks to all of our veterans, past and present.
I'm sorry, excuse me. Thank you, yes. Thank you, yes, I concur with that. Any new business? No new business? And we go to important dates.
Important dates, starting on November tenth, brush drop-off Old Main Street, eight AM to two PM. Also, at least tentatively at the moment, November tenth, Senior Center Building Committee, Town Hall, Room Nine, six PM. As noted minutes, a couple of minutes ago, November eleventh, Veterans Day Ceremony, Town Common, eleven AM. Town offices will be closed. November thirteenth, brush drop-off Old Main Street, nine AM to four PM. November fifteenth, brush, Verizon Cable License Renewal Ascertainment Public Hearing. Town Hall Auditorium begins at six PM. Then November fifteenth through the nineteenth is a curbside collection of yard waste. November sixteenth, Economic Development Committee, Town Hall Auditorium, six PM. I would note here, and I guess, I think it was not identified when this was put together, but also slated for November fifteenth is a meeting of the Town School Building Administration Group at seven PM. November sixteenth, Wildwood School Building Committee, High School Group Instruction Room at six thirty PM. November seventeenth is another brush drop-off Old Main Street, eight AM to two PM. November seventeenth, the Finance Committee, Town Hall, Room Nine, seven PM. November twentieth is another brush drop-off Old Main Street, nine AM to four PM. November twenty-second, Board of Selectmen, Town Hall, Room Nine, seven PM. Also on the same evening is the beginning of the discussion with regard to local property tax policy with reference to the classification of fiscal twenty-two. Board of Selectmen meeting, Town Hall, Room Nine, seven PM. November twenty- November 24th is a brush drop-off Old Main Street, 8:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. November 25th is Thanksgiving Day, Town offices closed. They are also closed on the 26th of November. And then the 27th is a brush drop-off Old Main Street, 9:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. November 29th through December 3rd, a curbside collection of yard waste. And then brush drop-offs again on December 1st, 8 to 2, and December 4th, 9 to 4. And then December 6th to the 10th, another curbside collection of yard waste. Board of Selectmen meet in December on the 13th, Town Hall, Room 9, 7:00 p.m.
Thank you. And now we'll do our salute to service for James F. Banda.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And it is my pleasure on behalf of the Wilmington Board of Selectmen and our residents to recognize not only is it Veterans Day this Thursday, it's a great opportunity, but Mr. Banda would have been 100 years old this month. And Mr. Banda was a World War II veteran who served in Germany during World War II as a member of the Army Second Armored Division. He was awarded the World War II Victory Medal, the Good Conduct Medal, the Purple Heart, and the Bronze Star amongst other accommodations that he received. He was wounded in 1944 in Germany and came home with his lovely wife and lived in Wilmington for nearly 60 years. Went on to serve the community of Wilmington in many capacities, including member of the Board of Selectmen, the planning board. He was a veterans agent for a time and also the library board of trustees. And in fact, today, there is a room in the Wilmington Public Library that bears his name, the Banda Room, which I know most of you have been to. He has a very large family still here in Wilmington. And for these reasons and many more, we offer our salute to service to Mr. Banda. He's an incredible story. If you haven't heard the stories of him and his platoon and what took place on the beaches of Normandy and elsewhere. Absolutely heroic, incredible story that he was a Wilmington guy. And I've had an opportunity to read some of the articles that the family sent me this weekend. And I would encourage everybody to take a look at them. Some of those articles are available at the library. Incredible story and we're grateful for his service to our country and to our town.
Thank you. That will conclude this portion of the meeting. I would now entertain a motion to enter executive session for the purpose of discussing strategies with respect to multi-district litigation regarding PFAS in accordance with MGL Chapter 21A3. As an open meeting, may have a detrimental effect on the town's position. And further that, upon the conclusion of the executive session, the board will adjourn the meeting. Do I have a motion?
Shall move.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? Roll call.
Judy O'Connell, yes?
Carrie Palmer, yes.
Kevin Kyrie, yes?
Greg Bendel, yes.
William Masella, yes. Thank you and have a good night.